All right, it is now six oh one, so I would like to have the pleasure of introducing our Assistant General Manager of Power Supply, Kelly Nguyen, to introduce this meeting and start us off. Kelly?
Thank you, Mark. All right, good evening, valued members of the Pasadena community and city leaders and staff. Welcome to our third and final community meeting for the 2023 Power Integrated Resource Plan. I would like to thank you all for joining us tonight and allowing us to present the modeling results. Again, my name is Kelly Nguyen. I am the Assistant General Manager of Power Supply for the Water and Power Department. Approximately about a year ago, we began work on this 2023 IRP, a comprehensive state-mandated process to develop and update PWP's plan to address long-term energy and capacity resource needs, policy goals, physical and operational constraints, as well as other priorities. And guided by our prior IRPs, in particular, the ambitious 2018 plan, the 2023 IRP was modeled with the same forward-thinking determination to meet or exceed California's increasingly aggressive clean energy targets as quickly as possible. As we shared in the previous community meetings and public meetings, we contracted with ACES for our IRP consulting services, and most notably, the computer modeling that was used to identify multiple pathways to achieving both state regulatory requirements and also to incorporate the goals of Resolution 9977, which was approved by the City Council in January 2023. PWP also contracted with Energy and Environmental Economics Incorporated, also known as E3, which conducted an independent audit of the modeling results. I would like to thank Patrick McGuire from ACES, who joins us again tonight to present the modeling results. And thank you again for coming tonight. Your ongoing comments, feedback, and participation has helped shape the 2023 IRP and is very much appreciated. So, thank you very much. Here's the ACES team, Nettie Brock, Patrick McGuire, Todd White, and of course, our Power Supply team. Here tonight is John Hermosy, Mark Webster, and Jessica Lesquas. And Patrick, I'll hand it over to you. Thank you.
Before we go to Patrick, first, we have some slides from John to go over the agenda and other housekeeping items.
Oh, I am so sorry. My bad. Yes, we do have some housekeeping.
No problem. It'll be quick housekeeping. Good night, everybody. Good evening. John Hermosy from PWP Resource Planning here with your agenda for tonight. We'll be recapping the process that we went through for the 2023 IRP, progress to date. You'll see what the PWP looks like at a glance, the position from which we'll be moving as we change to a new resource portfolio. And that's going to be the subject of the 2023 IRP, from which you'll hear at length from our ACES friends, notably Patrick McGuire. This will be followed by a Q&amp;A session where we open up the mic to you and we answer as best we can any questions you might have. Speaking of those questions and answers, we request that to make the meeting smooth and to give everybody a chance to be heard, that you give us our questions vocally during the Q&amp;A session, and that portion only. Please raise your hand using the Zoom feature so that we can call on you, that we know you have a question. If you could limit the length of your questions, we can give you full answers and move on to as many members of the public as we can. PWP has engaged in quite a bit of public outreach for this singular IRP. Everything you see here was just this one IRP for 2023. And as you can see, numerous groups were involved, in fact, more than you see here. They include the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group, you might hear about them in just a moment, our Municipal Services Committee in the City of Pasadena, Pasadena's Environmental Advisory Commission, and you yourselves, the community. We've had two community meetings before this one. The first one in February talked about what Pasadena is, PWP, the IR, what is an IRP, where are we right now? The second meeting went into the IRP itself as we were setting it up. At that point, we described what are scenarios, what are sensitivity tests, what will we be studying, and what we're putting into the IRP, the kinds of questions we'll be asking. Those questions by now have been answered and we'll be able to tell you about them in this meeting, and as well as the steps going forward. I said a moment ago I talk about STAG, our Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group. This was a focus group of Pasadena citizens who worked with PWP, engaged in sometimes heavy, definitely deep and far-reaching discussions. We covered areas such as the load forecast, what does it mean to have a social cost of carbon and how's it incorporated? Should it be incorporated in the IRP? Yes, we did that. They also gave us input from which the IRP used the cost of new resources for the inputs to the study and defined what scenarios to study, what sensitivity tests to apply to those scenarios, what are emerging technologies and how they should be regarded in this IRP. Also, resource technologies approved for the IRP that we would want to study, given the goals that we are trying to address. Requests for elaboration only led to a clearer and more concise IRP, and we appreciate all of the questions and the input that the STAG has given us. For those of you who are tuning in now and are members of the STAG, thank you once again for your contributions. Where do we go from here? Literally, we go to the Municipal Services Committee of the City Council on October 10th. And from then, the tentative plan is to move from there to the full City Council for a vote on the IRP.
Thank you, John. And now I have the pleasure of introducing Patrick McGuire of ACES, one of our lead consultants, along with Nettie Brock, to introduce and to discuss the Integrated Resource Plan.
All right, thank you, Mark, John Kelly, PWP team, citizens and residents of the City of Pasadena, welcome. We're happy to be able to join you here tonight and step through the results of the Integrated Resource Plan and the kind of many months of work of what has gone on and kind of show where we are in the process and to see what some of these portfolios look like into the future. So if you go to the next slide, Mark. I wanted to start with a couple more just kind of definitions of just defining the process. You know, IRP, the term is out there a lot. An IRP is an acronym for Integrated Resource Plan. Back in 2015, Senate Bill 350 established requirements that publicly-owned entities, publicly-owned utilities adopt an IRP and update that every five years. So in 2018 was kind of the first wave of IRPs for cities like the City of Pasadena and California to file, and those are all on the California Energy Commission website. There are, there's a document that prescribes some of the rules. We're going to talk about some of the requirements of what has, kind of the minimum requirements for an IRP. But in short, an IRP is a, is a long-term electric system planning document that shows how a utility plans to meet energy and capacity needs in compliance with state guidelines. So it's co-optimizing and looking at a multitude of factors, including kind of energy, how do you serve the load on a monthly, annual, and hourly basis? How do you have, ensure that you have enough installed and firm capacity to ensure that there's a reliable system? And then, again, any kind of mandated state compliance guidelines are included. And then, and this IRP was, was different in that there was the resolution that was passed in January, February. So we were looking at even deeper decarbonization portfolios to get to 100% carbon-free hourly by the end of 2030. And so that was included in this IRP. Go to the next slide, Mark. So what are the objectives and, and at the same time, requirements from the CEC? So the IRP again is a compliance report for the California Energy Commission. And some of the obligations that PWP has, this is a partial list. There's a, there's a document that the CEC has on the website that it's a whole, you know, list of requirements and templates you have to fill out to submit, but kind of the, the big items is that you have to have a load forecast. So every IRP, if you want to look at how much load you have to serve for capacity, peak capacity, and also energy, just kilowatt-hours of load, you need a load forecast. Every IRP starts with one. So produce the load forecast out through 2050. And then, as part of the overall process, once you have a load forecast, you have to demonstrate that you can maintain system and service reliability by meeting a certain set of reliability metrics. And we have a slide towards the end to say, how was reliability considered in this IRP? As part of the load forecast, there's other things, including forecasts for energy efficiency, electric vehicle growth. And then there's sections as part of the IRP of describing ways that PWP today or in the future could meet the, the needs of disadvantaged communities, address rate equity across the, the different types of customers in the service territory. And then, within every IRP, again, that all plans will meet or surpass state mandates on renewable or carbon-free energy and greenhouse gas emission reductions, and then some have even more stringent. So as part of this IRP process that was going to introduce along the way as we started was the resolution that the City of Pasadena be 100% carbon-free by the end of 2030. So we set out to, as part of this IRP, identify pathways. So what would it take to get there? What, what combination of renewables and storage? You know, whether that's distributed to utility scale would be required to meet that 100% hourly carbon-free by the end of 2030. And the CEC requires the adoption and filing of the 2023 IRP by the end of this year to remain in compliance with the state regulations. So slide 11 is a little busy, but it's a really good slide to show kind of the historical progress of the City of Pasadena and where we're, what some of these, we talked on a couple of these slides, what the mandates are for the state, you know, and where does PWP, where they're sat historically and where it's not projected to be kind of in a status quo or reference case type scenario. So the solid black line at the top shows the state mandates for greenhouse gas emissions. That's through various forms and iterations of legislation over the years. So that kind of, that's starting at the first target of, of, that the far left of the level of emissions in 1990 for the City of Pasadena. And then that steps down to 15% below that, that's a state mandate. It was then reduced further to say 40% below by 2030, 85% by 2045. And then, you know, there, in the past several years of additional state mandates of 100% renewable and zero carbon by the end of 2045. So at a minimum, every portfolio is going to meet those standards, meet or exceed that. That's kind of a ceiling, what it has, of what every portfolio could produce. And by the end of 2045, every portfolio that was modeled is 100% renewable and zero carbon by the end of 2045. So looking at, so that's kind of the, the mandates of what's come through in state legislation. The blue line on the left, looking at from 2013 to 2023, are, are actuals. So that is what the actual greenhouse gas emissions from PWP is a result of the resource mix. It's a combination of market purchases and also contracted, and also own generation at resources like Glanar. And it shows the evolution. In 2018, the City Council resolved not to participate in any new fossil fuel projects. So in all the portfolios that's held in 2018, and also for every year, there's no new fossil gas or any sort of fossil fuel project in 2018. The City Council also directed PWP to exit the IPP, which is an Intermountain Power Project, a coal plant that is being retrofitted to natural gas. And there's even longer-term plans to convert that to renewable, to hydrogen, renewable hydrogen. But PWP will exit that project by the end of 2027. So, you know, just as a recap, I mean, all portfolios reach 100% renewables for the RPS standard. That's on an annual basis, looking at renewable production, so it's wind and solar by 2027. So even the reference case that is just kind of modeled, if we continue down more of a business-as-usual case with the aggressive environmental reductions, still has a lot of renewables added. And then the other addition, I guess, that's come through is that in the 2021 IRP, the PWP has a 14-megawatt take off of the Magnolia Natural Gas Combined Cycle Plant. And that, well, that contract will expire in 2036 in the reference case. So looking, I guess, a little bit backward, just trying to get a sense of what the size of PWP and the load that needs to be served by any of these portfolios. And it's, it's helpful to contextualize in the context of the load forecast of where PWP has been, where they're going, and where we expect that, that rate of growth to be. So the all-time peak, and so this is for an integrated hour. You know, what is the highest peak hour for the system for PWP? And that was 320 megawatts in September of 2022. The 2023 summer peak is looking to be, and absent some heat wave through the end of September, is 300. So far, this summer is 319 megawatts. So it came close, and again, that's in September of this year. What we're seeing long-term through 2050 is kind of an annual average growth rate of about 0.6% annually. So that's kind of the net impact of what we think is just kind of organic load growth. That has new electric vehicle additions. And then it also is a kind of net of new distributed solar that's kind of expected to happen organically, kind of based on trends that what's been historically and what's projected in the future. For energy, so this is saying, so that's in a single peak, a single hour, what's the peak load in the highest year? I guess, shifting gears of looking at energy. So this is saying that's the, the hourly demand moves every day for the City of Pasadena. It's going to be higher as you move into the evening with heat and the summer and air conditioning load. And then as the sun goes down and it cools off and people go to bed and it's dark out, then the load comes off. So there's kind of this hourly deviation. But really, that, from the energy standpoint, is looking at, here's how much you need more on an, on an annual basis. Saying adding all that up for every hour of the year. And it's helpful to look at not just that peak hour, but also kind of over the entire year, how is load being consumed in the City of Pasadena? The highest year has been in 2008 is one, a little over 1.3 million megawatt-hours for annual energy. It's come down quite a bit over the last several years. And there's a whole host of factors why that is. Some of it was related to some of the load from the recession in 2007, 2008. But a lot of that is just due to kind of work energy efficiency, lighting, and, and other just overall efficiency and improved standards for appliances over time. And so that, that's a trend that this kind of other utilities across the country and in California have seen. Also embedded in that number is, is some rooftop solar that, that reduces that energy as well. So while it has gone down, it's kind of a step change from 2008 to now. We're forecasting annual average growth of around 1%. Now, this is kind of on a weather-normal view, so if there are some years that are warmer than others, so you could have deviations there, but kind of weather-normalized, looking at average growth. And some, a lot of that is due to electric vehicle, just kind of organic load growth, beneficial electrification and so forth, offsetting some of what's expected to, to happen organically in terms of, you know, distributed and rooftop solar over time. So that, the 320-megawatt peak in 1.3 million megawatt-hours, or maybe like 1.1 million megawatt-hours, is kind of a benchmark to, to maybe keep in the back of your mind as we show some of the capacity as we go forward in talking about the results. So the City of Pasadena has, yeah, a host of contracts and resources that are, are in the portfolio or are already signed and expected to be in the portfolio in the future. And this is part of just kind of the ongoing work that they do for long-term power supply planning. A lot of these contracts and resources have been added, you know, years or a couple even decades ago, depending on when the project came online or where it came into Pasadena's portfolio. So there, there's kind of a diverse resource mix that's in the portfolio today. We kind of have it grouped by some different types, and you'll see how these start to roll off over time. The Intermountain Power Project, they're the first two lines we talked about. So that is the, the PWP's take on that is 108 megawatts today. In the middle of 2025, that, that coal plant will be converted to burn natural gas. PWP's take will be reduced from 108 to 50. And then, at the end of 2027, or kind of towards Q3 of 2027, PWP's share in that will end. The plant will still be there, but PWP will no longer participate in that project. And that's per the City Council directive back in 2018. The Glanor Peaking Units, there are five units of kind of varying technologies, but generally operate as, as peaking units. So they don't run very often historically and aren't projected to run very often in the future in the cases where they, they stay online. But those are 198 megawatts. We kind of, I might mention 200 megawatts, just kind of rounding. But there's five units that, that make up the Glanor Unit, and that is in the City of Pasadena. You can, you know, drive by it and, and see it. Magnolia is outside of PWP's service territory. It's a combined cycle plant. And PWP's take on that is 14 megawatts. So again, it, it runs more on a capacity factor basis than Glanor, but it's a much smaller percent of the portfolio. That will go away in the reference case, when we talk about that in 2036, no matter what. And the carbon-free scenarios, that is accelerated to the end of 2030. Similar with the Glanor Units, those units will continue in the reference case, but they are retired in the, in the in the carbon-free scenarios. The other, there's some landfill gas projects, the 10-megawatts combined for those that go away in 2030. Two projects that are, that are external to PWP, but are still, provide firm capacity and energy to the residents of Pasadena is a small share of the Palo Verde Nuclear Plant. So it's a 10-megawatt share. That is counted as kind of the account, a carbon accounting. That is a carbon-free resource, but not renewable for the RPS. Similar, the Hoover Dam is a 14-megawatt take off of the Hoover Dam, which is a large hydro project in the West. The 14-megawatt take is considered and included in the carbon-free accounting, but is not considered renewable. There's some wind contracts. Milford Wind goes out into the future. It's 5 megawatts. Again, that's a share off of it. And then there's a, and then the, a small wind project of take off of a wind project is, will expire at the end of 2023. There is a decent amount of solar already in PWP's portfolio from Antelope, Columbia to Kingbird, summer, winter. Recently, just earlier in calendar year 2023, PWP signed contracts for EDF. EDF is a renewable developer for a project called Sapphire, and it's a solar plus storage project. It's 39 megawatts of solar plus just under 20 megawatts of that four-hour battery storage. So that'll be external to the PWP service territory, and that was recently signed. And that project will come online in 2027. Two other projects that are a share off of already existing projects are the Calpine Geysers and Coso Geothermal Projects. These are both geothermal and are counted towards renewable and carbon-free. And those, those projects are already existing, but they will come online in 2027. So that's kind of a view of what that looks. We can add that up. It's somewhere close to 400 megawatts of installed capacity. And then we'll talk in a little bit about kind of the difference between installed and then how much of that, these megawatts that you see here, can you count towards your, your firm capacity contribution in the difference there? If you go to the next slide. So there are a lot of, I guess, questions in terms of what a carbon-free scenario or portfolio would look like. So there are a couple of things as we're going to show, based on the modeling. So the modeling is optimizing for the lowest cost, subject to the constraints you, you put on it, right? So some scenarios, we'll look at the differences between scenarios one, two, and three. Scenario one is kind of saying, you know, the reality of, of PWP's service territory is that while PWP is a California ISO market participant, they are kind of bound by, they're limited by how much you can import from areas outside of the PWP by a transmission line called TM Goodrich. And so that is a 280-megawatt transmission line. Again, the all-time peak is 320 megawatts. So there has to be, you know, in a perfect world, if you could cite everything out and you could count on internal, you would need resources internally to support that. So there's kind of local reliability and energy needs that are required. So each scenario as you step through, it looks at different types of constraints that you're putting on. So then, the model will say, okay, the first scenario is one, two, and three that we're going to hit on. Those, all three of those portfolios reached the goal of 100% carbon-free on an hourly basis by the end of 2030. Scenarios four and five are more the reference case, and we can look at the deltas of what, what's the mix of technology that this looks like. So as part of that, we're going to address a couple of things of what, what is the, what do those portfolios look like in terms of the mix of capacity that's required? And we're going to talk about a few key questions, and a lot of which we received through stakeholder meetings and that I'm sure are top of mind, and like, what are the challenges of this in terms of citing and procuring that amount of resources? And then what will it cost? That's, you know, a big question we'll look at as a, you know, a comparison to the reference case. What does that start to look like? What could cause that cost? If you go down that path to be higher than expected, what could result in it being lower than expected? And then it'll kind of lead into looking at some ongoing resource planning activities, talking about reliability, talking about ongoing studies. And then we'll go to PWP to kind of recap what they'll look at here in the future. Go to the next slide, Mark. So here's what a 100% carbon-free portfolio looks like. So what I show on here is the, the current portfolio on the left, and you'll see it's kind of a blend of what was before, right? The coal goes away by the end, by the time some of the battery storage comes on. But it's kind of saying, here's what we kind of expect today. There's 100 megawatts of coal in the portfolio. There's a little over 200 megawatts of gas, nuclear there. On the right is by 2031, if you want to hit that 100% carbon-free hourly. And we're looking at, we're going to define here in a minute the difference between the scenarios. But we looked at scenarios two and three, and those really looked at, okay, here's, based on the realities of PWP's service territory, the location, the transmission constraint with Goodrich, where you need to cite those, here's how much. where you need to cite those, here's how much is required to be able to meet that stringent goal of a hundred percent hourly. So the range on there is just indicating that's the difference and kind of the range that we see between scenarios two and three, which differ somewhat by the amount of distributed resources that are included in the load forecast. So what we see in terms of general trends is for solar, we're looking at between five hundred and fifty and seven hundred megawatts of solar, you know, six hundred to seven hundred megawatts of battery storage. The majority of that is four-hour battery storage. There is some two-hour residential in there. You can get into some six-hour battery storage as well later in the, in the study. Some incremental wind is added, thirty to sixty megawatts. There's less than what you'll see in the reference case because of the Goodrich constraint of being able to actually import a lot of that wind if you have to build access. So a lot of it has to be solar battery storage. There is some incremental new geothermal that's added on top of the already contracted geothermal. And then there are some fuel cells that provide more of a local reliability benefit that are required. And those are assumed to be hydrogen-fueled with green hydrogen-fueled fuel cells. So what we see is what's required is procuring or adding an additional thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred megawatts of installed capacity with that mix of solar storage, wind, geothermal, and fuel cell. Embedded in this and embedded in the load forecast is, is an estimate for increasing energy efficiency and then increased demand response, and also, you know, distributed resources, kind of netted against expected growth in electric vehicles. So, you know, from a, from a challenge standpoint, you know, I think what we've proven and shown in the modeling is that you, the model actually can hit a hundred percent hourly carbon-free by the end of two thousand thirty. It would require a significant amount of new resources, which leads to some challenges from the procurement standpoint, but this is what it would take, it's to, in order to meet that. Go to the next slide, Mark. So what are some of those challenges? And, you know, there, there's kind of a few. And what we want to do is kind of break it into the big categories, talk about those, and get into, you know, I guess, as, as the city of Pasadena and PWP moves forward, we can talk about potential ways to mitigate or at least study and address this. So, you know, the first two is really looking at, they're kind of related, is, is timing and location. So this resource, this, these carbon-free portfolios, particular scenarios two and three, require a lot of distributed solar and battery storage. So commercial, a lot of it is commercial scale. So we're kind of assuming an average size of two hundred KW for commercial businesses and five to ten KW for residential. So there, there has to be a lot of it coming on. So where is that can be cited? Are there enough viable rooftops that could just be feasible in order to hit that and hit the capacity factors that we have modeled? It is a significant amount of resources, thirteen hundred megawatts on the low end, fifteen hundred on the high end, to procure over the next seven years. I mean, if you think about the EDF Sapphire deal is contracted today to come online in two thousand twenty seven. So there's, you know, two thousand thirty still seems a little bit out there, but there's, it's still a tight timeline in terms of that amount of volume in order to be able to see, can the market support that? Can the local system handle it? Is it, is it feasible? The other kind of two categories that were addressed in the IRP and looked at is, what is the cost of this? And again, there, there are challenges with adding that much resources. And we're going to kind of contextualize what that looks like, and also what could, every IRP is a point-in-time estimate as you move forward through time. As you, you know, we have projections and estimates for what we think the cost of various technologies for storage, wind, solar are going to be. That will certainly change over time, you know, potentially higher, potentially lower, and we tested both of those. And the last is kind of just a critical assumption of reliability, of being able to ensure that there's the same or even better reliability standards that are met by any of these future portfolios. So we're going to kind of step through into these different challenges as we go forward. Go to the next slide, Mark. So this slide here, and we'll kind of step through it as, you know, you start to look at the legend and everything, just to explain what we're looking at. So what we're looking at is, you know, I had the table before, the installed capacity ranges. That was between scenarios two and three. We're kind of zeroing in on installed capacity by two thousand thirty one, because that's when the majority of the capacity needs to be added. There is more added over time, and some of that still accounts for load growth and other things. But really, to hit that goal of carbon-free by two thousand thirty, there needs to be resources added sooner. And for all the portfolios with IPP going away, there is a need to add resources as soon as two thousand twenty five. So what you can see here is the cumulative in, installed capacity for each scenario. And I'll define what the scenarios are kind of going left to right here in a second. But this is installed capacity by technology. Obviously, the yellow is solar. That's kind of the, the big chunks. And that could be any type of solar, commercial, or utility scale. We didn't differentiate it on this chart. The green is battery storage, and we kind of highlighted, wanted to just highlight those because of the two biggest components of these portfolios. As you see in the scenarios four and five, with more access to external resources, they, there is more wind that's deemed economic to be able to hit the energy capacity and RPS needs of those portfolios. So defining what these scenarios are, from on the left is scenario one, is we wanted to look at, you know, if we, if we could design a portfolio that said, well, let's for a minute kind of suspend belief in terms of, you know, where we can cite a lot of renewables and storage. All right? So if, you know, PWP wasn't built out, or you had tons of spare acreage sitting around that you could install utility-scale battery storage and solar, and kind of unlock that constraint, what, what would the model build? And so the model is able to cite, build a lot more and cheaper utility-scale solar in the service territory. Again, it's close to two hundred and fifty megawatts. Every megawatt of solar is between five, takes up between five and ten acres. So it's a lot of space. It's, it's not, wasn't deemed to be this portfolio that could be achieved, but it's more, okay, here's a benchmark as you're comparing it to maybe other utilities who don't have the transmission constraint. And so what you see is still a lot of fuel cells and battery storage able to balance a lot of, of solar capacity. You end up with just over eight hundred megawatts of installed capacity relative to the two thousand thirty one peak of just under four hundred. For scenarios two and three, that is saying, okay, let's, let's add in the reality of that PWP service territory is dense, it's fully built out. There's really not the ability to add utility-scale resources. These still, utility-scale resources, just because of the economies of scale, are going to be cheaper when compared to commercial or residential. But because of the transmission to policy, there's transmission constraint from Goodrich from external areas outside of PWP importing into the PWP service territory, it has to build a lot more resources. The other thing is just adding more of those resources externally and fully building out what's internal requires a significant amount of resources. This was kind of on the upper end of the fifteen hundred megawatts of capacity installed, you know, almost fifty fifty between solar and battery storage. Scenario three says, okay, what if we can take the amount, we have an amount of embedded energy efficiency and command and response of distributed resources that are going to, expected to happen organically? What if we double that and kind of just say that this takes off faster than we think and more prioritize distributed resources? What, what does that do? And what it says is it allows you to maybe build less resources. So that's kind of getting to the thirteen hundred megawatts of installed capacity. That mix of between solar and storage looks pretty similar. It's almost fifty fifty in terms of installed capacity for, for that scenario. Both, all scenarios one, two, and three, again, all meet a hundred percent hourly carbon-free by two thousand thirty. And what it shows is really, you have to overbuild in order to hit that time. So there's a lot of times when you have a lot of energy in excess of your load, if you have that much solar, and then the battery storage is able to store a lot of that excess solar and discharge it in times when it needs it. Scenarios four and five are, scenario four is what we've called the reference case. So that says you have to meet all the state mandates for greenhouse gas reductions, eventually hitting zero, zero, a hundred percent zero carbon by two thousand forty five. So scenarios four and five do meet that by two thousand forty five, but it, it has the ability to leave Magnolia on through the contract term, and Glenarm stays online, again, operating mostly as a peaker resource, running, you know, less than five percent as you get out to the twenty thirties of its kind of theoretical capability, known as capacity factor. So because you have Glenarm that stays on and provides that kind of reliability component locally, you need less resources. The model does want to add more wind. Because there is more access to the market, it requires more balancing for the RPS and renewable on an annual basis. Eventually, it, it enables the model, and the model chose more wind compared to scenarios one, two, and three because of that, and being less restrictive on the hourly and also where located. So that's scenario four. Again, it still adds a significant amount by two thousand thirty one of wind and battery storage. Scenario five is the reference case, and we have added a social, the social cost of carbon, and then said, okay, now optimize for that. So the model with the carbon tax and their very high carbon tax, as modeled by the social cost of carbon in there, adds a significant amount of wind. And the existing thermal resources just don't, don't run very often. You have excess wind, that some of that sold in the market, some of it goes to serve PWP's load. Go to the next slide, Mark. So I mentioned a couple of times that, you know, the load forecast, there's a certain amount that's, that's built, a certain amount of distributed solar and battery storage that's just built into the load forecast before we even model any additional commercial or residential or community solar. So this slide just kind of shows what the scale of that is, is we're looking at distributed solar, kind of the purple on the right, growing from about twenty five megawatts in two thousand twenty three, expected to grow by two thousand thirty two, basically almost double into the early twenty thirties, and then eventually grow into a hundred megawatts through two thousand fifty. So significant growth in distributed solar projected, and so that's going to be, anything that the model selects on top of that is, is in addition to this amount. The number of households expected to grow with storage or with, yeah, with storage is pretty small today on a percent basis, less than five percent. Expected to grow over twenty five percent by the end of the study. So looking, comparing some of this projected growth to what exists today. So in two thousand twenty two, around six percent of PWP's households had solar, and that kind of cumulative amount of installed solar is twenty three megawatts. This increases to twelve percent by two thousand thirty, again, close to doubling, and then close to doubling again by two thousand forty five. Next slide, Mark. So we talked about kind of timing, like the, being able to install thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred megawatts capacity by the end of two thousand thirty would be challenging. Where it's located, you know, how different incentives for that, some of that distributed stuff, distributed solar and storage would be handled, is, is still kind of outside the scope of this IRP, would need to be worked through. So compared to the reference case, it is more expensive, and it's primarily due to the amount of resources that are needed to add to the portfolio. It's all the resources that are added, all the solar and storage is assumed to be PPAs. The reference case, the, the metric that we're looking at now, this is kind of the standard metric in Integrated Resource Planning, it's called the Present Value Revenue Requirement, PVRR. What it does, it's looking at the total power supply cost in millions of dollars per year over the study and discounted back into net present value to today's dollars. So this is in billions of dollars. It's kind of a nebulous number of what does one point eight one billion dollars is that high? Is that low? There's other information that'll be coming out as part of the IRP that converts this into a rate, so you can look at rate. But in terms of kind of percent increases and the delta, this is still a useful metric. It kind of rolls all the different components in kind of complicated math that goes into the revenue requirement down to a number that you can start to compare on an apples-to-apples basis. So that's why it's used. So the reference case scenario four, as a result of all the existing resources plus what's added through the end of two thousand fifty, the PVRR is one point eight one billion. And what we have is kind of a walk into scenario three. Scenario three is the cheaper portfolio because there's more distributed resources that are added earlier and allows you to avoid building additional resources. So we're looking at kind of the lowest cost coming out of the model, carbon-free scenario. There are fuel and variable O N M savings. Obviously, as you retire Glenarm and exit Magnolia six years early, there are some savings. It doesn't add up to a lot, mainly because it's about a hundred and eighteen million, mainly because Glenarm doesn't, just doesn't run very often, for one, and also the Magnolia contract still ends in the reference case in two thousand thirty six. But there are some savings. It's a hundred and twelve, yeah, a hundred and eighteen million dollars in net present value terms over the course of the study period. There is some increased costs as you start to get into the hundred percent hourly. There were some assumptions and that, that there's some market interaction increase in costs from the reference case to scenario three. Those kind of net out, but the, really the biggest change in delta between these two portfolios is the cost. So this is an additional one point four four billion dollars of resources that are added over the course of the study period. Again, this is discounted back to two thousand twenty three, and that's really driving the majority of the difference between the cost of scenarios four and scenarios three, which is the lowest cost, a hundred percent zero carbon portfolio. So go to the next slide, Mark. So, yeah, I said it before, so the, the IRP is a point-in-time estimate. We have to make assumptions today for the future. Some of that is, we've worked with the STAG going back to March and April of, okay, what would a PPA for a new battery storage look like in, if you signed it today versus two thousand twenty seven, twenty eight, two thousand thirty, two thousand forty five? We've used both near-term market benchmarking. You know, there have been significant decreases, I guess, over the past two decades in renewables, wind, solar, and battery storage. What we've seen over the past kind of three years is that cost, PPA prices have been going up. There's kind of a host of, of different reasons why that's happened. But I think, you know, offsetting some of that is the newly passed Inflation Reduction Act, which is just over a year old now, which has unlocked a lot of tax credits and benefits that have helped to offset some of that increase that's come. So there's a, long story short, you know, there's been enormous breakthroughs in these technologies. Costs have come down. We've seen a pretty significant increase in those costs over the past three years. But there's, there's a lot of different drivers. There's a lot of uncertainty what that cost would be, the idea that anybody could say, we know exactly what it's going to cost for a PPA in two thousand thirties. You know, I, I think there's uncertainty around any estimate. So we did develop high and low technology costs. So as you're adding thirteen to fifteen hundred megawatts of capacity in these, what if the cost ends up being higher than you expect? And what if it's lower than expected? So there's, that's related specifically to the technology costs. But there's other costs too. I mean, the IRP is, is not designed to be kind of a perfect estimate or forecast of rates. There's all sorts of other costs, additional California ISO market cost, congestion, the resource adequacy rules could change, the transmission access charge. As you go forward into implementation, that you say, okay, this amount of commercial solar isn't viable, we now have to find a different type of technology to fill that need. There could be a different resource mix that could result in a higher-cost portfolio. And there's general market volatility with supply chain and, you know, wholesale market prices that could drive it. There's also a whole host of conditions that could cause this to be lower as you go forward in time. Again, the lower technology costs, I think, as part of the Inflation Reduction Act, there's expected to be a lot of domestic. domestic manufacturing of renewable, you know, solar battery storage components and actual projects being manufactured here that could lower costs. Additional tax credits, I think the IRS and the USDA and others are continuously adding, providing more guidance on, on being able to unlock all the funds that were outlined in the, in the IRA. There's also other efficiency gains as you start to think about, okay, you know, we had to model as a hundred percent hourly. It's really almost cutting off ties to the California ISO theoretically in the model, but in reality, there could be efficiency gains as you think about integrating and managing anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred megawatts of additional capacity. We're from a portfolio management, you know, forecasting and that, there's efficiency gains there, other state and federal funding for DERs. And then other things like, you know, if, if there's more private funding that, that come through for DERs at homes, businesses to offset that cost. So it's, it's fully expected that, you know, this is a point in time estimate and what the cost could be, but there's certainly a whole host of factors that could cause that to be higher or lower as you go forward in time. Next slide, Mark. So a, a big question that, that's come up in the stakeholder meetings and EAC meetings and others is, is the, the impact of how much of that, if a, if a good chunk of that additional cost and resources is distributed, meaning it's assumed to be residential, commercial. You know, how are those costs allocated? The, the answer is that the base IRP model included the DER costs as PWP costs. What PWP looked at and what they looked at is how much is forecasted to be added in these portfolios versus what is in service today or even projected to happen organically. And the reality is the amount of distributed resources in those carbon-free portfolios are, are so much higher than what's in today that the assumption would be that they're, that PWP would have to cover those costs in, in some way. So we, we didn't try to prescribe what that exact rate design or incentive would look like. It's just assumed that those costs would be borne by PWP and spread out in rates. There's a lot of factors and uncertainty around that. DER adoption itself will be impacted, what that dynamic assumption is will be happened by government policies, the C E C, Inflation Reduction Act, what we've talked about, other orders from FERC, like the two by four. There, there's a whole host of other kind of federal and state legislative efforts that could impact that. You could look at the potential to lower the cost. One is that if there's any state legislation that could help accelerate it from a permitting perspective, from a cost perspective, federal grants, state grants, kind of a host. And I think that's part of what Kelly and the PWP team will talk about. I guess it's going forward in time of other things that, that, that they'll be looking at to address this. I, I went on a bit about the, the resource, the cost of the resources, and really this is thinking about, okay, for solar, wind, battery storage, even geothermal, but really solar, wind, and storage, right? That's the bulk of the resources, in particular solar and storage. You know, how, what do we think we could contract that for? Versus, you know, what happens if that ends up being lower than we expect? What happens if it's higher than we expect? The, the trend in PPA pricing in California continues to be, go up over the past couple of years and expected to go up this year. If you look at documentation from Level Ten and just what PWP sees in the market. So, you know, today we're seeing supply chain, supply chain disruptions, tariffs, other regulatory obstacles. You know, a lot of it is, there's, there's an enormous amount of demand from corporates wanting to add renewables to meet their own sustainability goals, and it's kind of outstripping what's available on the market. The other thing that, you know, that's embedded in a lot of these cost increases are the interconnection queues or, or logging and really across the country, but even in California, as, you know, most of the good sites are taken up. As you start to add a significant amount of solar and storage, the transmission interconnect and that interconnection costs are increasing as well. So that's not necessarily expected to continue forever, right? So what we're looking at is, you know, potential for the build out of domestic supply chain and manufacturing. We talked about like the full weight of the IRA in effect, you're looking at different transmission upgrades. I know California and the CPUC and CalISO is looking at interconnection queue reform to be able to expedite projects and get that projects done faster. And this has the attention at FERC and that. So there's all sorts of attention on all these factors. And I think the industry as a whole, on both the buy side, people buying it, utilities, corporates, and also the developers themselves wanting to get these projects done, are working together to, to get this. So if you go to the next slide. Mark, so what, what we have is, you know, we are expecting and forecasting in the model that the cost of solar and storage and renewables are expected to go down over time. You were looking at kind of the market in the kind of low to mid thirties today for utility scale solar PPA. And, you know, there's a whole range of that. And so that's kind of some of the uncertainty. It's, it's not like, hey, there's one price that you go good. It's say, this project is higher than this, this project's lower. But this is kind of an average, and that's expected to go down over time. Same with battery storage, there's a little greater range, but certainty just because of the potential for more breakthroughs. We're kind of seeing in the, you know, ten to twelve dollar per kilowatt month range today, that's expected to drop to eight by the early twenty thirties. So in the IRP, we, we don't have the results on, on these slides, but in the IRP, we looked at, you know, if you locked in what those portfolios were, what are called sensitivities to say, okay, now, rather than assuming it's that solid black line for the base, let's assume we could procure all that solar that's added at a much lower cost at the dotted line below for each of the renewable and storage technologies. To say, okay, what if we do better than what we expect? And then alternatively, because of all the challenges we evaluated, what if it ends up being more expensive than we, than we could, we think we can contract at, or think we could contract at in the future? Next slide. So reliability is obviously a, a big consideration in, in any IRP, any ten and long-term power supply plan. Reliability was modeled several different ways in the IRP. There's a, there's a host of methodology of how everybody does it. The ways that we included it in the IRP was that, one, is that there is what's called a planning reserve margin for firm capacity. So I kind of hinted at this in, in, earlier in the presentation, there's installed capacity. So if you have a one hundred megawatt power plant at its max capacity, cruise of one hundred, how much of that one hundred megawatts can you count on during your peak load? So that's also modeled, so that's a planning reserve margin. So that's part of it, but also as part of that is saying, you know, every utility will carry whatever their peak load is, plus a little bit extra. Right? Just to account for uncertainty. You know, that all-time peak was three hundred and twenty, what if there's a big heat wave and the heat builds over two weeks and that gets up to three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty over time. So there's a certain amount of uncertainty just because things go wrong with plants, with the, with the system, and you want to build in extra slack. And that excess slack provides an extra reliability benefit. The other thing that we modeled, the, the way we handled reliability was looking at hourly chronological modeling of load, renewable production, wind and solar, and also market prices. And what this means is we have a full eight, you know, for every hour of the year, there are eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours in a year. That hourly you know, production profiles and kind of the diurnal shape to the wind, to the solar and to the load is captured. And so that is not just kind of a snapshot of, okay, we just know we have to build to three hundred and twenty or one point three million. It's it's every hour throughout the year. And then that's a big part of the hundred percent carbon-free hourly is being able to capture those dynamics of wind, solar, and load altogether. Another component was the local resource requirement. A lot of that is built into the Goodrich constraint of saying, okay, you can only import so much from outside of the PWP system. So the Goodrich was two hundred and eighty megawatts until the summer of two thousand and thirty-two, and that goes up twenty percent to three thirty-six. We also added different sensitivities, and this will be in the IRP report of what we call heat waves, is trying to model, okay, what would an extended heat wave look like? What would that do to the peak load? And then how would the resource, how would the resources we plan to a reference case peak? How would that be different? We also added transmission sensitivities of saying, okay, the Goodrich is two hundred and eighty, what if that import capability is cut in half? So the impact of that was kind of really stressing the systems to, to look at the reliability impact. You know, I will say that one caveat is an IRP model is kind of more, it is accounting for all this reliability and has the kind of high-level transmission topology, but it's not built to be or meant to be kind of a robust transmission planning tool. The, you know, PWP and has a robust, they have a transmission distribution planning team that's working on this constantly. There is some overlap in terms of, at some point it should move down in execution, but it's not meant to be that type of tool. So a, as PWP goes into the future, you know, there's a lot of areas for further considerations could be in future IRPs or, or other studies is really understanding, a deep understanding what the reliability implications of the DERs are. If you have distributed solar, if you have, you know, a thousand to fifteen hundred different sites of, of solar across PWP service territory, how do you manage that? How do you read that to be able to forecast it, to be able to actually count on that capacity? How much do you think is going to be there? How are businesses and homes utilizing those DERs for their own load to offset it? When would they potentially be injecting, providing excess energy to PWP? So it's really understanding how that forecasting, how that operation would actually look like. While we did have the hourly chronological modeling of, of renewables, you know, it is a, what, what's called a deterministic. It's just a kind of a typical weather year profile for solar and wind that's added. As you add that amount, there's a certain amount of uncertainty related, more on the wind, but still on the solar. If you look at, you know, fairly, solar is pretty easy to predict on a daily basis, but there's still times when you know, whether there's cloud coverage or other things like that, we're including some probabilistic modeling of high renewable portfolios could be agitators to understand the full reliability impact of, of a high renewable portfolio. Other things of, the ELCC is effective low-carbon capability to measure what percent of a, a resource in particular, you know, renewables and storage. You know, what percent of that can you count towards firm capacity? There's also the liability contribution of demand response and energy efficiency as you add it. And then also, you know, just further transmission planning analysis and sharing that NERF, the North American Electric Liability Corporation and CalISO requirements are met. And that's kind of an ongoing process of at PWP. So I believe that brings me to the end of my sections. So at this time, I'll pass it over to John at PWP.
Thank you, Patrick and Asus, and thank you for performing this wide-ranging IRP study. Now we are at the point where Asus is handing it back to PWP and the question comes up now, what is PWP going to do? For years and years, resource planners such as myself have been working on questions that we know are relevant to the future of the utility, important questions that we know always have to be answered and always have to be updated. This IRP study has pointed out some of those areas that are of particular interest and it's emphasized those that we really need to look into in the future. What you see here is only a few of them, but these are some major areas. They include looking into expansion of our distributed energy resources inside Pasadena, and that would be generation, mostly solar and storage. To see what would happen and what would be beneficial in terms of energy efficiency greater than what we already have and what's already been legislated in the city of Pasadena. We have an ongoing program to study our distribution and transmission, mostly distribution as far as PWP is concerned. And now that we know a bit more about the possible future role of distributed energy resources and of electric vehicle adoption, that will have an impact on our distribution system. So this tells us what to focus on as we continue to evolve that plan. And all of the scenarios show that we will need to replace massive chunks of PWP's resource portfolio, the resources that we have as they fall off one by one. That's going to cost money. And that will lead to a rate impact analysis so that if and when the time comes, PWP is financially positioned to pay for these resource additions as they occur. And we have a whole team of people who are focused just on that. People who know what they're doing, specialists on that, and they're going to be busy in the coming months after this IRP. So with that, that's what we have to say. Next slide, please. Now it's time for you, the public, to stand up and be heard. We would like to hear your comments and questions. So you have the floor and for that, I hand it back to Mark.
Thank you, John. So just as a reminder, for our Q and A, we asked that everyone limit their questions to a short period of time so that everyone has a chance to get through. And I'll be letting know who's up next on deck as the first person's asking their question. So first up, we have Jeanette Foster, and up on deck is Denise Jones. Jeanette? What is your question? Do you have a question, Jeanette? You are muted right now, if you are.
About, we come back to her.
Sounds good. We'll come back to you, Jeanette. So next up is Denise Jones. Nice, do you have a question? All right, not hearing anything. We will come back to Denise. So up next, we have Jay Doyle, and after that is Robert Ha. Jay Doyle, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. That was a great presentation. I guess the big question is, what do you do next? And I really want to know the, the two hundred and eighty megawatts that the Goodrich has the, you know, what, what can't get through? And then it's going up to three hundred and eighty-two, three hundred and thirty megawatts in twenty thirty-two, I believe. What, is there, is there a limit on the space, the size of the substation? Or what I'm asking is, or is there constraints on the distribution lines? But why can't the capacity be doubled sooner is, is my first question.
Thank you, Jay Doyle. I'd like to pass that question to John Hermosy to answer.
Okay. Goodrich is constrained by several factors, and you've named a couple of the biggest ones. The expansion plan right now is to increase its throughput capacity to three hundred and thirty-six megawatts by twenty thirty-two. Now that's being limited by space inside the station. It's limited by the ability of the distribution system to handle that, which entails other projects in PWP's distribution system to handle it. So it's not just Goodrich. And it also is limited by the combined transmission capacity going into Goodrich. So we understand that the three hundred and thirty-six megawatts now represents the total contractual sum of the two transmission lines feeding Goodrich. Once we get to that limit, the only thing that we could do then to increase the input into Goodrich would be to increase that transmission capacity. Those lines aren't owned by PWP, so that would be some probably some kind of transmission contract renewal or revision, and those things are predicated on studies, transmission studies. So it's limited by the sum of the two transmission lines going into Goodrich, that's three thirty-six.
What are the two transmission lines that go into Goodrich? Are they owned by S E?
Yes, they are owned by S E. I believe one comes from the Gould Station. I believe one comes from the Gould Station. Another one comes from Mesa. That's off the top of my head.
Okay, because, all right, is it, is it my time up? Is it, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
That I, I know that there is um, over generation out there and there's a lot of uh, supply of solar on the utility scale side. What I'm wondering is um, if there were four batteries distributed um locally. Uh, a- and, and let's just say hypothetically, PWP uh, actually uh, put batteries in commercial buildings and residential areas, not micro grids, but actually um, took up some of that oversupply uh, that's out in the market um, with the duck curve. You know, and stacked up a lot of that uh, electricity during the day. That's where I'm going with this. And, and, and tell me why that couldn't happen? And is it just because uh, the two hundred and eighty megawatt uh, constraint during the day?
Okay.
Or is that possible?
Okay. One of the great takeaways from this IRP is the value of energy storage inside Pasadena electrically. So inside Pasadena, looking from Goodrich inwards. And that can be developed and that storage capacity, as a matter of fact, PWP has a solicitation right out right now for twenty-five megawatts for four hours. That could be used not only to store energy that's coming into Pasadena through Goodrich, but also to store energy that is coming from distributed energy resources when they are generating an excess of our repairs needs. So it can, it can be done and would have those two uses.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Jay Doyle, for your question. Uh, we're going to go on to the next person, which is Rob Haw. And then after that, up on deck will be David. Rob.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Terrific. Thank you very much for this presentation. This, this was, um, this was clear, much, much clearer than past presentations we've seen over the past number of months. I have a question regarding uh, slide seventeen and, and maybe, maybe it's, there's also information on slide sixteen, but on slide seventeen, uh, specifically for scenario five. What percent does Glen Arm and Magnolia run uh, past twenty seventeen? Cause you are past twenty thirty, because on, on scenario four, um, the, the, uh, the speaker mentioned five percent Magnolia would run and, and Glen Arm roughly five percent of the time. So for scenario five, which has a higher, you know, cost on carbon, a significant cost, what would they be running?
Great. Thank you for your question, Rob. Um, I would ask if Aces would like to answer this question?
That's a great question. Uh, they certainly run less. I do not have uh, what those capacity factor reductions are. Um, unfortunately, I just don't have it available to me right now. Uh, but it certainly runs less because the social cost of carbon is added to the dispatch costs of those resources.
Would, would, would that be a, um, you know, would, would that number be available, uh, you know, in, in a few weeks, a few days? Could you provide that?
So, so this is, um, so you're asking what percentage of our load is generated from the Glen Arm plant, correct?
Generation? A- and Magnolia, um, in scenario five.
In scenario five. Okay, we will try to get that calculated for you. I know what it is for scenario four. Last year, four percent for Glen Arm. And for scenario five would be much less.
You're correct. And so just, just, just wondering what that might be. Cause maybe we'll, maybe we'll have a happy coincidence here of, of, you know, small numbers.
Sure. Um, it will be definitely something smaller than four percent, but we will get you that calculation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rob. Um, thank you for your question. Uh, so next up we have David. David, would you like, um, to ask your question?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Hi, I'm David Price. This is my first IRP meeting. Uh, so maybe my question's already been asked and answered um, during previous meetings. But if so, I'm asking for the answer to be repeated here. So, um, given our growing exclusive reliance on electric power in our lives and given it the IRP blueprint element of supplying reliable electricity. How much money is being invested on? And what specific steps are being taken to raise awareness of and to properly harden our power systems against the very real historically demonstrated existential, excuse me, existential threats of extreme electromagnetic incidents such as solar storms or deliberate electromagnetic pulse EMP attacks. The catastrophic results of which, in the absence of proper system hardening, could leave our city without electricity for months or even years. And just a footnote, a couple of historical examples of how this has occurred. And in fact, at much less vulnerable times in terms of electrical and electronic systems, the Carrington event of eighteen fifty-nine, it disrupted the telegraph lines, uh, communications and, and caused fires. And then later, you, you can look up the Starfish Prime, you know, that was a high altitude nuclear test in nineteen sixty-two. And that damaged electrical and electronic systems nine hundred miles away in Hawaii. So thank you.
Thank you, David, and I would like to ask, uh, John Hermosy to take this question.
Uh, thank you, David, for your question. You actually bring me back because in a former life, working at another utility, I actually studied these two phenomena. With respect to solar storms, the effect differs according to geography and geology. And in those two respects, Pasadena is relatively blessed. We are not we are not at great risk from disruptions due to where we are on the earth and what's happening under the earth in terms of conductivity under Pasadena, not likely to happen here in Pasadena. With respect to electromagnetic pulses, as you've said, the most likely source of an electromagnetic pulse would be an airburst of a nuclear weapon over Pasadena. We try and so far have succeeded, I would say, in keeping our power system reliable through the uh, normal cycles of life, if you will, year in and year out. We do what's reasonable with respect to what it would cost our rate pairs, because we have to be fiscally responsible while we're at it. But we can ask ourselves if something like that were to happen over Pasadena, how much load would remain to be served? Or does it become a moot point? So we have to consider these factors when we look at ranking our priorities as we keep the system reliable, reliable with respect to what? That's what we're doing.
Thank you for your question, David. Uh, next up we have Bob Conley and up on deck we have Bob Nolte. My apologies if I mess up any names.
Uh, you did a good job with Bob Conley. I have, I have two questions. One is, uh, when we start talking about a heavy reliance on distributed energy resources. What have you studied? What vehicles, uh, you envision employing in order to procure that? Um, what, where I go with this is that I see easements. I see, uh, agreements with, um, private residents that require certain amounts of upkeep and that they have to do, they will, they will become not a, they'll, they'll cease to be a customer and will become a vendor also. And so I'm wondering if you've studied that and what it is that you see in that regard.
Can I take that one?
Go for it, John.
We've made a preliminary look at that to the extent that it would be mentioned in our IRP and it, it's mentioned from two directions. One is the load that expanded electric vehicle chargers would impose, because that's what the grid sees in terms of load. The chargers, not what they're charging. That's the point of connection. And the other part is what the IRP refers to as V two G. That's also a term used in the industry. That means vehicle to grid charging. There is some mention of that. Definitely some mention of that in various places. And we are looking into this. We see the need to further look at this as one of our distributed storage options. So this, this is something that we're interested in exploring as a follow-on from this IRP.
Um, my question, I may not have asked the question correctly. The, mine's more the homeowner that has rooftop solar. And if rooftop solar becomes a material part of the situation, I see the wonderful hand of the state mandating uh, surrender of certain property rights to uh, ensure that the, uh, that person maintains their system and has now become an obligated party to the grid. So have you studied that? And if you have, what do you see?
Right now, the owner of a rooftop solar system in general, not just in, in Pasadena does not have to surrender that system to the utility or to the government. It's not happening now. And this is the first I've heard that ever being even contemplated happening. We are looking at it in terms of what happens if our customers install so much solar that both collectively and on an individual basis, they start pouring energy back into the system. We will have to have technical and rate-based mechanisms in place to deal with that. And we are aware of what they are, but developing in those are follow-on activities from this IRP. It's definitely in our minds.
Yeah, it's, it's just potentially an enormously complicated thing. It sounds really, really idealist. I'm not accusing you guys of being idealistic, but it gets said in idealistic terms. And uh, the reality is that it'd be uh, really converting the relationship between people and, and PWP. And um, yeah, it could, the, the cost benefit. It's, it's something that, I mean, if it's something that's considered to be long-term, that's, that's a place that, that you want to grow. I think you really need to address those things early on because that is potentially a hornet's nest.
Thank you for that input, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. So we, we will definitely continue to look into this. Um, so up next we have, uh, Bob Nolte. And on deck we have Nina Chomsky. Bob Nolte?
Hi, everybody. Um, I have so many questions. I've started a timer. I'll quit asking questions after two minutes. I guess my first question is, what fraction of a residential bill today is the generation charge typically?
Uh, so I can answer this part. Um, so in our rate structure, about fifty percent is the energy charge. So this is the charge you're paying per kilowatt hour you're consuming of energy. And the IRP specifically targets about seventy to eighty percent of that energy charge.
You mean the IRP says generation should be seventy percent of it?
Uh, so the IRP cost that we are getting out of this accounts for about seventy percent of the energy charge portion of your bill.
Seventy percent of the fifty percent.
Um, so I was hoping I was going to get a simpler answer than that. What would be the effect of doubling the amount that we have to pay for generation?
John, would you like to answer this one?
If the net effect were doubling the cost of the, the energy, that would be taking that seventy percent of the fifty percent roughly, which is about thirty-five percent and making that uh, so it would add another, another thirty-five percent, roughly speaking. That, okay, what you're, that's what, what you're saying would translate to.
Okay. Well, I'm out of time. Um, I just want to say I'm very worried about the one percent uh, delivery growth rate and the zero point seven percent peak growth rate. I've seen other utilities, uh, say they'll grow by sixty percent or a hundred percent by twenty forty-five. So I'm worried that's way too low. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Um, next up we have Nina Chomsky, followed up on deck by Renee Gonzalez. Nina?
Yes, I hope you can hear me.
We can.
Um, I'm, this, yes, um, I'm not a, a technical person on any of this. This is my first IRP meeting. I am a urban forestry advocate with lots of friends throughout Pasadena and in my own neighborhood. And I was struck by comments by Councilmember Hampton uh, at the recent council meeting that the IRP ought to consider heat islands and trees and things like that. And we who are urban forestry advocates want to reduce the impacts of heat and the sun, and I'm going to ignore conflicts with rooftop solar right this minute. We don't have time for that. But uh, we want to uh, have people use less uh, uh, air conditioning and, and live in cooler homes and in cooler neighborhoods. And we want to consider other aspects of cooling down such as uh, treating asphalt and roads differently. So does the IRP in considering um, what you need to supply in the future? Consider local policies like a strong urban forestry with canopy shade trees, both public and private and other methods of reducing uh, certain aspects of, of electricity demand? Or where do we go and who do we talk to to be sure that we who are advocating to reduce the need for all this um, are heard and that we get the city to integrate all of these policies, not just in your IR, your, your integrated resource plan. So um, was uh, Councilmember Hampton off base or what, what should we who are urban forestry advocates do about all this and think about all this? Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Uh, John, would you like to address this question?
Okay, yes. The load forecast of IRP accounted for what we know and what we foresee. What we know and what we foresee includes energy efficiency, conservation as forecast. And it was incorporated into what we think our low growth is going to be, what our energy uh, growth is going to be. So that stuff is incorporated into the IRP and it's studied in the IRP. Now, if more trees are to be planted or other measures were to be taken to reduce the heat signature of Pasadena, I could see where that would affect the load. And as we see that happening in the future, it would definitely be incorporated into future IRPs and studies. I would only guess as to who you might want to turn to as far as the uh, reducing the urban heat signature might entail, perhaps wrecking parks, perhaps a public works. Maybe your local council office can give you additional hints on that, and you can also speak to your local council members on that. Now, all of that is not within the IRP itself, but as these come up, future IRPs will be affected by them.
Thank you, John. Uh, so next up we have, uh, Renee Gonzalez. So next up, we have Renee Gonzalez, followed on deck is SW. Renee? You're muted, Renee.
I got it.
Ah, there we go.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So what I would like to suggest is that currently with Pasadena Unified School District, we know that we have measure all money and we were promised sustainable investment for solar installation. We have a lot of square footage at the school sites. And I would like for the city and the school district to look into the possibility to collaborate, not only for solar panel installation, but also for EV chargers for teachers and staff. We have talked about this in our parent groups, and I think this is the perfect moment to to do this. We're sitting on a solar goldmine, if I could say that, in Southern California. We got the best return on the on the hours, you know, for the sun exposure. So I think that a city and district should collaborate and look at, not only to buy, you know, power from from other sources, but actually invest in our own city and be independent in that same perspective as as how we created as Pasadena's Pasadena Water and Power. So in this case, we will not be 100% dependent on on the outside, but we will generate our own source of solar, you know, sitting in Pasadena. I think it's it's a great opportunity. And we funded, we voted yes for measure all. So I think between the city and the district can, you know, begin the talks to to do the best that they can for the for the citizens. And so that's, that's one thing that should not be, you know, undermined.
Okay, thank you so much for that input, Renee. PWP has been in talks with PUSD in the past about solar. And we'll reach out again to see if we can reconnect on more conversations. So thank you for that input.
Thank you. Next up, we have SW, followed behind by Denise Robb.
Right. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for running this late into the evening. I have a question about the demand response programs that are being modeled in these in the IRPs. It's interesting and, you know, kind of heartwarming to see that these are being modeled into the IRP. But where is Pasadena Water and Power in terms of a timeline for actually creating a demand response program in Pasadena, whether that's for residential or commercial customers?
Great, thank you for your question. John, would you like to address this?
Yes, this is a strong question with an ongoing answer. We start off with a current demand response program that Pasadena has with a group of commercial customers. It is a voluntary program. And the demand response for that program has been incorporated into the IRP. We are looking into different ways, the different groups inside Pasadena in a in different bases to expand demand response. This is definitely one of the areas of fu- future resource, future research for Pasadena to look into. We see, we see a great untapped potential there.
Great, thank you, John. Up next, we have Denise Robb with Jeanette Foster on deck. Denise?
Oh, hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good, thank you. So I'm sure you all saw the New York Times article today showing that the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration said that June, July, and August have been the planet's warmest in their 174 years of tracking, where 1.25 degrees Celsius above the 20th century average. And that goes into the question that I have, which is we don't have any time left, no time left. We, you've done a great job. I love, this is my first IRP meeting, but I did attend another one where you presented and you've done a lot of good work and I really appreciate that. But what I'd like to know is, when are you going to give a realistic plan and a timeline with very specific milestones so that we reach the agreed upon 2030 carbon free by 2030? Because we really don't have any more time.
Great, thank you for your question, Denise. Kelly, would you like to respond to this one?
Sure. So thank you, Denise, for your question. We appreciate it. So, you know, as we have done with past IRPs, the 2023 plan will continue to build on the foundation of our past IRPs. And each IRP serves as an update of the earlier plan while considering new and changing laws and regulations, resource availability, market conditions, and other priorities. The two, you know, the 2018 IRP was one of the first in California, be the most ambitious, you know, clean energy strategies and, you know, set goals of the SB 100 and so forth. And now, five years later, the 2023 IRP will incorporate the targets of the newly SB 1020, which accelerates the interim timeline timeline of the 2045 zero carbon goal and drive faster progress. The 2023 IRP plan also incorporates the Pasadena's Resolution 9977, which sets a policy goal to source 100% of our electricity from carbon free resources by 2030, while optimizing affordability, rate equity, stability, reliability of electricity. So we, you know, we are a responsible resource planning group. And it's an evolving process. So we need to build on the groundwork set in the 2018 and prior IRPs. We need to achieve the combined goals. We need to include continuing to focus on the acquisition of all these energy resources, specifically new solar, wind contracts, ongoing development of enhancement of the distribution and the transmission systems, other actions, other investments that effectively ensure reliability of electricity while minimizing impacts for our ratepayers and the environment. So as in prior years, we will continue to do you know, continue our resource planning activities. It's an evolving process and we will, you know, provide periodic updates. We'll be, we'll be presented to both of our governing bodies and our communities so that collective decisions can be made that are in the best interest of this community.
Great, thank you, Kelly. So next up, we have Jeanette Foster with Lauren Corey on deck. Jeanette, do you have a question? You're still muted, Jeanette, if. We will come back to you, Jeanette. So up next, we have Lauren Corey with Skylar Garing on deck. Lauren?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Perfect. Thank you again also for this presentation. My comment parallels Denise Robbs. When an overpass collapses, the county and state create a very precise timeline with clearly defined benchmarks. When Pasadena creates the bike lanes, the city also creates a precise timeline. I understand supply chain holdups and wholesale market forces, I really do. With this understanding, will PWP also create a timeline and make it public? If a, after a bridge collapsed, if the county or state were to say it's an evolving process, people would be very upset. I've gone through a lot of earthquakes between the, between the Bay Area and Los Angeles. And those, those projects met a deadline and it was very articulated. Can PWP do the same thing with the understanding that there are supply chain issues and wholesale market forces? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Lauren. Kelly, would you like to answer this question? Or should we ask John to answer this question?
I think that was more of a comment than a question, but thank you for your input, Lauren. You know, I think that if you were to ask me, so your next local battery storage project that we're trying to plan for, if are you going to be able to give us an exact project timeline on that? I would say yes, pretty soon. So once you have, you know, I mean, the resource planning is not a project per se. It's a very complex, you know, process, if you will. And there's many, many projects and programs and everything that we're considering that's involved and various studies and, you know, very good various regulatory requirements. So, you know, it's really hard to lay out a timeline for the complete picture, if you will. But we can certainly, as we go, lay out timelines for various certain projects and programs. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Up next, we have Skylar Garing with Sam Burnt on deck. Skylar?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So I know we were mentioning Goodrich earlier and I have a question. So in scenarios one to three, we have sort of this significant huge amount of distributed energy resources being produced. And this is sort of due to that Goodrich transfer station constraint, from my understanding. So have you modeled how the carbon free scenarios might look if we created, say, like a second transfer stations? We could double the amount of cheaper scale utilities that we can have coming in from outside the city? And I was also wondering, at the EAC meeting, it was mentioned that in scenarios, I believe, one to three, we're sort of treating PWP as an energy island. Does that mean we're not in those scenarios modeling selling off that sort of doubling of extra resources that we're creating and benefiting from the costs in those, the profit in those scenarios there?
Thank you for your question, Skylar. Patrick, would you like to answer these questions?
Yeah, I can answer. I think the the question, the first one, Goodrich. So I'll say that in explicit scenario or sensitivity or anything where that transmission line was doubled or increased wasn't explicitly modeled. However, scenario one is kind of insightful for if you could unlock additional transfer capability, you know, what would that do to the portfolio? And that's effectively what scenario one looks at. And it says you have, you don't have to install quite as much. You can install more utility scale solar. Because we we almost kind of unlocked that that transfer constraint. Because we say, hey, you can put it, what's equivalent to just putting it in the service territory. An alternative way to think about that is you put it external, but you aren't constrained to flow it across. So that that is a way to view that scenario is, but it wasn't explicitly done as a scenario to evaluate, okay, this much benefit, here's the cost benefit of of increasing transfer capability of Goodrich. I don't know if that helps. So that that scenario one helps evaluate that. The second question, can you repeat the second question? I apologize.
I'm sorry, I'm also blanking on the second question at this moment.
I think it had to do with the profitability, profitability.
Yes, sorry, thank you, John. Thank you, John. So there, the base model assumption was that starting in 2030, scenarios one, two, and three would have, wouldn't have access to the spot market for energy. And that includes both market purchases and market sales. So all that excess energy would either have to go and be stored in batteries or curtailed. So there are curtailments in that. But the rest is is needs to be used a lot, like the batteries are needed and it needs to be any of that, or a lot of that excess is stored in battery storage. Certainly, we also ran sensitivities, and this will be in the IRP, where we kind of opened that back up. We said, okay, the portfolio selection is locked in at the amount of solar and storage. But now you have the ability to purchase from the market or sell the any access into the market as well. And so that was included. And, you know, it's framed as there, there's uncertainty around what that would be, right? As PWP is adding a significant amount of renewables, whether that looks like scenario one, two, or three. So we're a lot of other entities. And so that, what is the value of that excess solar during the middle of the day? You know, it's presumed that there are sometimes there's some value could unlock. There's other times when you couldn't. So it was kind of a way to isolate that. The primary reason why we modeled it this way as more of an island was more on the market purchase side. We couldn't guarantee that you're buying carbon free electricity from the grid. There's assumed to be some carbon intensity in those market purchases. And we couldn't, they wouldn't meet the 100% carbon free hourly by 2030. So that's why, but we did include both, will be included in the IRP to look at the difference there.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Next up, we have Sam Burnt with Shane Smith on deck. Sam?
Hey, y'all. Thank you all so much for tonight's presentation. It's been a pleasure working with you all. As a stag member, a number of us spoken up about the inadequacy and unrealistic nature of a number of the scenarios, particularly the carbon free ones, as they were being defined before they were being modeled. For example, scenario one, not setting up those constraints on utility scale internal resources and also not really accounting for the upgrading of Goodrich to allow more external carbon free resources from outside the city. So you ultimately, or this ultimately led to scenarios one through three being framed today as being, you know, expensive or challenging to implement because of the large amount of distributed energy resources. At the time, you assured us and Environmental Advisory Commission that the scenarios would be utilized as quote unquote building blocks and that you would create a realistic plan, given the results. At this time, you haven't indicated that you are going to provide a realistic plan. And so I was wondering when you plan on doing this? And if you're going to include this in the Integrated Resource Plan that you present to the City Council, the CEC, and ultimately to, in the Integrated Resource Plan document? Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. John, would you like to address this question?
Sure. The IRP provides the results of five scenarios, including the emerging technologies study that's added to that, as well as several sensitivity tests. And the scenarios show what the magnitude of addressing the underlying goal would be in the goal for each scenario. So when you talk about whether a scenario is realistic or not, look at what the whole scenario says, which is the goal and any conditions or openness of conditions, the absence of conditions to address that goal. That would be a more fair way to assess any scenario. The IRP says that we have five scenarios, all of which meet or surpass the state mandates. And three of them actually go beyond that and address the city of Pasadena goal for earlier decarbonization. They all accomplish that. This message will be going to the City Council. This message will be going to the California Energy Commission. And the results of the scenarios give us information showing where resources are needed and how much of those resources are needed. They are portable to any future policy, applicable to any future policy that we need to work under. So this is the kind of information that we'll be giving to council as we are presenting the IRP to them.
Thank you, John. Next up, we have Shane Smith with David on deck. Shane?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Great, great. Look, I know we're in love with the Glen Arm plant and we'd love to keep it forever. And we worry about the cost of other technologies, you know, competing. And we worry about the cost of other technologies, you know, competing renewable technologies. And we've modeled sensitivities around those new technologies. But have we really looked at what could happen to the price of gas? I mean, it has certainly increased a lot over the last number of months. What if it doubled for the next three years? You know, so how sensitive, how carefully did we look at rapid expansion in gas prices? And how much does that kind of affect the reference case? That's my first question. I do have a follow-up.
Okay. Patrick, would you like to address this?
Yeah, so the price of natural gas that was used is based on the forecourt for gas. We do see the prices that are in there for 2023, 2024 in particular are quite a bit higher than where they had been, say, historically. And so that was accounted for wherever the market is today. But, you know, overall, because Glen Arm runs very little, you know, even doubling or tripling the gas price would make them run even less and would kind of net out some of the effect of that. But certainly, when Glen Arm is needed, it would increase the cost of that. That was an evaluation.
Thank you, Patrick. Shane, your follow-up question?
So I guess the follow-up cost was in scenarios four and five, we do require Glen Arm to be that critical resource. There's really no other option to supply that power in a renewable fashion?
Thank you. John, would you like to address this question?
Yes, the greatest value of Glen Arm is not energy. It's resource adequacy. It gives us capacity. It gives us great value by just sitting there off, but ready to run. That's why it's not as sensitive to the price of natural gas, as Patrick pointed out. So if we don't have Glen Arm there, we're going to have to make up for its absence. And where its absence is most sorely felt is capacity. That kind of a generating station, it has a high value per installed megawatt in providing capacity. Other resources, unfortunately, the renewable resources, most of them, do not. That's why you see in the results, many, many more megawatts of those having to be built. That's being driven by the resource adequacy requirements that we need to fulfill to keep the system as reliable as it would have been if Glen Arm were there. And that's showing what the alternative would look like. Would you like to add anything to that, Patrick, or did I pretty well frame it?
Yeah, I think you framed it pretty well.
Great. Thank you. Next up, we have David with Skylar on deck. David?
So, hi, Mark. Can you hear me again?
We can, yes.
Great. So how is the fact that funds collected from Pasadena Water and Power ratepayers are routinely being transferred to the City General Fund? How is that consistent with the IRP blueprint element of supplying electricity at competitive rates? Doesn't PWP have to charge ratepayers more than what electricity costs in order to have funds to transfer to the city? And how is this funds transfer going to be impacted by the IRP cost increases? Thank you.
Thank you, David. John, would you like to address this question?
I would love to address this question. If PWP had power over all of this, what you're referring to, David, is the city transfer, which is embodied in the city charter of Pasadena. It's not something that PWP is under control of and it is factored into every rate ordinance PWP has. So with respect to supplying energy, this is an external impact on the rates. The IRP is not a rate document, but follow-on rate studies incorporating the need to pay for and to finance these resource bills. We'll have to include everything else that goes into the power rate. And one of those factors is an allowance for a city transfer. And that is a matter of rate analysis, cost of service, and rate design, which happens after the IRP is not part of the IRP. We didn't know that it's there.
Great. Thank you, John. We're running out of time, so I see we have two hands raised. So if I can ask to help keep the question short so that everyone has a chance to speak. So next up, we have Skylar with Sandy Krasner on deck. Skylar?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on my previous question. I had another question after your answer. I'll be quick. Would it be possible to see how the effects of opening up the market changed the costs? It seems like since we're producing such a large amount of renewables, we wouldn't actually be buying if, very little if at all in scenarios one to three, but we would have quite a lot of ability to sell. And so I'm curious how that changed costs.
Great. Patrick, would you like to address this question?
Yeah, I would say I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it will be in the IRP. There still are market purchases to balance out some of the renewables. And that's how, a lot of the reason why the market, it doesn't require as much battery storage. Because for some of those hours where renewables are low, load is higher, you know, it can just lean on the market a little more. But you are correct in that there are more market sales. That comparison will be in the IRP.
Great. Thank you.
But I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
Thank you, Patrick. Up next, we have Sandy Krasner. Sandy?
Yeah, a couple things. I thought the announcement said that this was going on until nine o'clock. Are you cutting off at eight?
On that, I believe the schedule said eight.
Okay. Real quickly, what I wanted to ask was, can you clarify the 4% number about Glen Arm? Is Glen Arm producing 4% of the total energy that Pasadena uses? Or is it running 4% of the time?
Great. John, would you like to address?
Yeah, I can answer that. It's more like 4% of the time. It's not, it's not anywhere close to 4% of the energy. Well, I would only say that. It's running 4% of the time. That's the answer.
Okay.
That's more of a capacity factor of that resource.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Sandy. So unfortunately, we have run out of time. So we thank you all for your engagement and for coming and attending this. You know, it means a lot to us to have the community participating and caring so much about this. And it only makes the document better. So thank you all for your time and have a great night. Yes, so this concludes our meeting and we look forward from hearing from you in the future. Thank you for attending.